Are our participants and we've been absolutely successful. So, and I think a lot of communities have. But then here lies the next chapter to the story is now that we have married, married private and government together for workforce needs. Transportation continues to be a barrier across the state of Ohio. So we dialogued with her about that needing to have flexibility in funds. Asking her to look at possibilities of using TANF dollars and other dollars that we can have because as you know, we get certain funds and they're earmarked for certain things and we can't cross them over. And in Portage County, we've been using our incentive dollars for the last four years. We work hard, we get incentives, we can use them wherever. We've put them back into the transportation piece. So she asked me to send, because I talked to her a little bit about Portage County, but yet what our struggles are. She asked me to send her an email with what our county looks like and what our needs are because I think she's really trying to advocate. So I'm going to share that email with you when I send it to her.
Okay, that would be great.
But I think when we're looking at a grant writer and some other opportunities of grants, transportation is really the next chapter for our citizens. Because we don't have public transit in a lot of locations. Many people don't have cars, but definitely the willingness to work, so.
Wow. So, so when we have the JFS drivers under the O M J. When it goes from forty-six to one ninety-eight. Is that, is that just merely, I mean, like you said, adding certain programs? But is it also because we added another driver too? That, or was the driver not added in October?
We have two drivers now.
Yeah.
And so that, that represents the two drivers now. The manufacturing coalition has grown. The one memo that you'll see in a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
The participants have grown. We had just completed an STNA program with Stark State and Akron. So I think it's representative of both drivers now. And then also what we're doing as far as, and then CCMEP. We are transporting those kids to different places. And so that looks different. But we absolutely are, we're transporting kids to tutoring and to other after-school programs. But again, great programs, we need additional dollars. Or at the very least, the flexibility of dollars. We would love to use program dollars instead of incentive dollars for these things, so. Hopefully, that's the next chapter for the state of Ohio, not just Portage County. But that's a good thing that we're getting people to work. It's just a struggle how we're getting them there. Intake appointments, customer service center. Those numbers seem to be stable unless you've had any questions on that. Page two. Page three is just our workforce and Mandy throws a lot of data in there for you. They seem to be very consistent. We've seen just about thirty more customers in our Ohio means job center. But that also is a one-stop-for-resume-writing, looking-at-job-leads. We also have training opportunities. So it doesn't necessarily mean more people looking for jobs. They're probably just looking for supportive services as well. On page four, we backed out in, under the child support world, the Passages contract that entered September thirtieth. But we added IMPACT in two different locations in this report. So the IMPACT program is what replaced Passages. So we're starting out slow. We've had a total of five referrals to that program. And that's the program where through the courts, through child support and our Ohio means job center, we're working to get all the cores back to work. So not only are they working, but they're also paying child support. So we're also doing a lot of cold calls with those parents. Those that are on child support caseloads that aren't working. Asking them, would they be willing to voluntarily come into our center and work with us? So I'll report out as we grow in that program, but it's really new right now.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And I guess I never noticed this unless it's a new thing. What is the Job Club job placement?
Job Club is a classroom. So they do, they run, I don't even know how many weeks it is, but it's Job Club. So they have different sessions in there. Resume writing, budgeting and finance, car insurance, those kinds of things. How to dress for an interview, professional etiquette. So that must have been one participant that went through that, that ended up getting placed in the job.
Okay.
Page five, a little bit higher with our CCMEP youth. We're at two hundred and fifty-four as of October. Great that we're doing, we have more kids involved, we're young people. But that also puts a burden on the case managers that we have, but we're, we're rolling with it. And then page six.
And that is still like year-round now. Whereas before, it used to just be like summer employment, right?
Yeah, Director Hogg is in dialogue right now with our association, looking to resurrect the summer. Not that there wouldn't be year-long opportunities. But right now, you have to, you have to go year-round. So looking at the option of just for those families that just want their kids to be plugged into summer, why couldn't we do that in addition to having year-logs? I think that would be successful if they brought the summer back. But right now, yeah, we've enrolled them and then they participate with us year-round.
She spoke at CCAO and I met her. She's very, very nice.
Very intelligent, very, great visionary.
Yeah, her part, yeah.
So that's just a little bit increase in number there, page five. And then unfortunately, on page six, and I always hone in on this. But we did see more kids come into care in October. However, we are about down to two hundred and eight kids now in foster care. With the group home now, it's, it's pretty profound as we were having a staffing on some things. We have about sixty teenagers in foster care. And so that's comparable to where we've been, but a little bit higher. But again, the, the youth are really a population that we're going to focus in on, especially with the federal, I don't know if they talked about it at CCAO or if she did, but with the whole Federal Family First Act. And then we have until twenty-twenty-one to, the system to step kids out of congregate care as far as not allowing them to live there permanently. That's going to cause a lot of kids to, communities to have to look at alternative placements for kids that have otherwise dwelled in residential centers. So we're a little bit ahead of it trying to do what we're doing here. But I think that's something that all systems are going to have to look at. You know, finding normalcy or at least building a bridge of normalcy for teenagers. So they're not aging out of facilities and also meeting the federal guideline, which is twenty-twenty-one. Child support, page seven, really constant numbers. You just see where we contract ended. That was the section on Passages on page seven. And then our staffing numbers have been comparable or consistent right around two-hundred.
Kelly Jo, on page six, if we looked at this for December or in December, like how would the group home number look? Would it be shifting?
Yeah, and I had it as a discussion point. So our group home number, you're looking at residential.
Oh, the last section. Because of the last box where we'll start to see.
Yeah, we'll put our numbers in there. So we have two young, three youth in there now. We have two more coming before Christmas, five, and a sixth young lady coming afterwards. So yeah, you'll absolutely, but we'll differentiate JFS group home with.
I think you already are. It's just, this is October, so it's, you.
The group home wasn't open.
No, but there's actually also other group homes outside of JFS. So I'll make sure I put.
I get it.
A non-JFS and JFS. So right now, then it would, it would say then, yeah, for December's five.
Would either of these numbers above come down or no?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, the kids that are, four of the five youth that are there have stepped down out of different, more intensive facilities.
Okay.
So yeah, you'll absolutely see that. Any questions about the data reports or clarity that I can provide? And then the next agenda I had, what I'd done was revised job descriptions. So the first one was an eligibility job specialist position. And in our public welfare side of the house, we have the shared services concept that we work with five other counties. And we just didn't have the call center language and that modified contract. And so we just needed to make sure it was updated to reflect the call center.
Kelly Jo, I know we were one of the pilot counties for the call centers. Everyone now on board was the call center?
I'm told there's about seven counties in Ohio that still are not connected to a hub.
Okay.
They, the state never made it mandatory. They were hoping it was, so I don't know what, what the state director, if they were. But we're, there's about close to eighty of us connected to some hub of some sort, so. Yeah, we'll see what happens, right? Clinical Services Manager. We, this was the manager position, the second management position that we wanted connected to not only the group home, but to children's services. When I drafted the job description and presented it to you about nine months, that role would play two parts. One would be coordinating the clinical services of the kids in the home, but also working with all of children's services cases. We do have to do more better with monitoring psychotropic medication that kids are on. And, and so having someone in-house to be able to network with the clinical people in the community and also the residentials is good. We ran two different rounds of interviews and didn't find that we had, the individuals had the skills we were looking for. So I modified the job description. One, to not require that they have five years of residential experience per se. And then just to see if we can get different people in the door. Because what was coming in the door, people that might have had residential experience, but didn't have a lot of experience on the clinical side. So we're hoping to get a broader pool of candidates. So it was just a minor or a mild change in the qualifications in this non-bargaining position. And then the last one was the children's services legal specialist. So in our children's services agency, while we've contracted with the Portage County prosecutors for the attorneys, we have a paralegal and a legal specialist in children's services. So the paralegal has been supporting that legal specialist. And it only made sense to review, are they really doing the same work? And indeed, the job description that I gave to you was color-coded. Really reflects a blend of duties. And so with that, I did have Janet Kovek in whatever panel she uses job factor that. And it gives factor the same as the pay grade seven, which is the current pay grade for the legal specialist. And so if you would approve or you support this job description modification, next week, we would send up a pay adjustment for the paralegal and a new job title for her. So then we would have two legal specialists here in lieu of a paralegal and a legal specialist. Contract amendments. So as we monitor contracts and look at what's being used and not used, I bring these to you routinely. My goal has been for the last couple of years, always to talk about them with you first before you get them in the backend with Joanne, so you have some substance. And so the two contracts this month, and we'll have a couple more next month in January that we'll talk about with children's services. These both are also children's services contracts. So there was a company called Northeast Ohio Behaviors Center. And in two thousand and nineteen, I talked to you, that company went out of business. They were having struggles with billing Medicaid and getting funds timely. And so one of the clinical therapists that worked there actually established their own company, which is Lighthouse Family Center. We did go through the RFP process for this new contract, so transparent. She happened to be the company that was awarded. Under Tammy Devine's administration, it's not that we're not providing evaluations or we're not referring for psychological evaluations of parenting. We still are, but it just seems to be a decrease or a shift in that. It could be very well that we're seeing families return through our system and we've already had evaluations on file. But, so we put a number out there with the contract that kind of looked the same as the predecessor. And we definitely are underspent with that. So proposing to reduce the contract from fifty-five to twenty-five. And this provider has been notified and they're in agreement with the reduction. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. That will be coming through to you. And then Coleman Tay Housing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're, this was probably three years ago. Before the state's Bridges Program. The state's Bridges Program was what came to fruition for eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds that are leaving foster care. The state now has funds allotted for them and a state place management program for those kids. So kids emancipated from foster care just don't fall through the hoops. Before Bridges came up, I presented to the Board of Commissioners at that time the ability to do something here because we did not want to see kids becoming homeless. So that's when Coleman stepped up to the plate. We established that contract that would allow or would commit JFS to paying for three apartments for a period of time. And also it provides clinical wraparound for kids living in their complexes. Now with the Bridges Program and in other different programs, we have a relationship with Metropolitan Housing that's willing. We don't feel we need to have the three apartments. There's been one consistently vacant. I've talked to Bill Russell and also through Nelson. And we want to reduce it to two. So everyone's in agreement. I'm still having that as an option for kids.
Is that TAY an acronym for something?
You asked me, I think, three years ago, and I still don't remember what. I came back to you.
We know, we get used to.
Something, something.
What is it?
Transitional adolescent youth. I'll email all of you in from this. Do you want me to find out now?
Uh, you know, I, I was thinking about that. You were going to give us the list, right?
I did give you guys an acronym of our programs years ago.
Okay, and have this.
I added, and I don't think Kathleen and I gave it to you. I think, so I'll make sure, it's like seventy-five acronyms of JFS world. So I'll make sure TAY's on there.
Okay.
Do you have it on there? Oh, you have it, right there.
I have it.
Is TAY on there?
No.
So I'll have to have it. It is transitional something, but I'm sorry. It'll be in the contract too. But I'll make sure I get it back to you.
Transitional adolescent youth.
Something.
Yeah.
So that was that. And then IMPACT and manufacturing program updates, they're just updates. I talked about the IMPACT program just now, unless you have any questions. The manufacturing program is exciting. We're about to move into our, what is it, our third cohort? No, our fourth cohort. And we're moving from ten companies to potentially twenty-seven. Seventeen other businesses have contacted us and said, how can we work with your program? You know, we still, JFS funds the, the education piece with Kent. So they do, they get a certificate, a manufacturing certificate. We fund that, it's about fourteen-hundred dollars per person. So that will increase the cost for us. But what they do is they complete the program with Kent. Here onsite, Kent comes here and then with that certificate, they lead into an internship program. And then from there, they do, well, they're putting people on payroll. So very successful. Just wanting you to know, we're going into our fourth cohort in February. But again, transportation, as you have more people to serve, transportation continues to be the challenge.
Kelly Jo. I hear the Portage Development Board talking about the program a lot and enjoying working with your staff, yeah. Is that part of maybe how the word's gotten out and the increase in manufacturers? Or what do you attribute it as?
Yeah, when we initially started, we were, because we, we were partners with Craig, Portage Development Board refund part of his, his outfit too. So he's a partner with us. And when we had the brainstorm idea, he brought the manufacturers to the table. We brought the idea to the table and that's how it started. So he's been a partner with us ever since. And Mainland was one of the first companies and continues to be. But you continue to see people at the table that they are truly vested. And they don't mind working with our participants that have barriers. It absolutely has been a success. And they wouldn't continue to come if they weren't getting something from it. So, yeah, and Brad's a wonderful person and we work really great together. So it's a good thing, it's a great project.
Oh, I Googled it. It's Transitional Age Youth is what TAY stands for. I had two of the three words right.
Thank you.
Transitional Age Youth.
Last update before I go, just talk about the levy renewal. The group home update I gave you, do you have any other questions on that? Just the numbers. We're heading into Christmas, it's an exciting time and kids are building relationships. It's new, but we're happy that they're together.
And everything's going good with it so far? Kids are enjoying the home and?
Home is good and great and beautiful. We have little schooling issues and clothes in the dryer issues, kid issues. But, you know, it's good, it'll be fine. Presents for kids. Record Courier is coming down this afternoon because our third floor is lined with presents. We've had wonderful donations from people in the community, our staff. The sheriff's office has committed to some funds from their staff. The memo that I shared with you, and I just want to acknowledge some people, NeoMed, Hungview Howies, Eleventh Frame Bowling, Kent Presbyterian Church, Lake Pharma Supply, Wayland Community Church, New Life Church, Triborough, L'Oreal, Veterans Affairs, Belmont Pines, and Holy Trinity Free Orthodox Church all have committed to either cash or presents. And so each of our kids that are in foster care will get at least three presents for Christmas this year.
Wow, that's good.
And we did not have to come out of our operating budget to do any of this. It's because of the generosity of people in this community and outside that really feel compelled to give to kids this time of year. So just wanted to make you aware of that.
And I have witnessed that hallway.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
I mean, everywhere, it's pretty neat.
It's, there's another outfit that we're working with, it's, she's called the Bike Lady. She's coming tomorrow. This organization with Huffy Bike and Trumbull County Correctional Institution. They're donating, they're putting together at the jail thirty bikes for kids in care. And so they're delivering the thirty bikes tomorrow. So hopefully, the Record Courier is coming for that one.
What time?
I don't know, can I tell you afterwards?
Yeah.
So anyways, we'd like to have the press key available to see all of that. And then the last thing is we have a levy renewal coming up in March. We had our point seven-five that passed and we're so happy about that. This point four-nine is another renewal. Both of these were here many years ago. We did not want to do anything to increase either of these. So again, this is a renewal. The caveat is that I would ask if you could sign and have it certified by the clerk like while I'm here. The Board of Elections has an eighteenth deadline. And your next meetings are the nineteenth and the twentieth.
I understand, yeah.
So I'm back on your agenda today at one-thirty. I've contacted the auditor and she's willing for me to hand-deliver. I need your signed resolution to be hand-delivered to the auditors this morning. In turn, they calculate the valuation for the point four-nine. Give me that data and before one o'clock, I draft another resolution. The second one can come back at one-thirty. So if I could please ask you if you support the renewal of the point four-nine levy? Could you sign it?
Yeah.
And Julie's coming to it here and then I can take it with me.
Do you need us to sign it like right now before you leave? Where's your ad?
You need to adopt the resolution and then I'll do it.
Oh, okay.
It's on your consent agenda though, number seventeen.
We'll do it today, but just not right this.
Well, no, she's saying you need it signed now. I need it signed like in a really small window so the auditor has only a small window to do what they need to do.
What's at one-thirty?
Me coming back with a second resolution. Because I didn't, I talked to Joanne and we didn't want to ask you to come back in on the eighteenth because you already have the nineteenth and twentieth. So we put this year, so you didn't, because otherwise, we would miss our eighteenth deadline if we had to ask for a special session.
Okay. So, so I'll make a motion to pull number eight from the consent agenda.
Seventeen.
Oh, is it seventeen? Oh, it's number eight on her thing. Okay, number seventeen on the consent agenda. Head it down as eight.
And Joanne knows I'm asking you to do this now too, so she's aware.
And where would that be at in our thing for us to pull?
I have to go do the resolution after you do the votes.
Okay.
And then I, I put in the votes here and then I.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of necessity for placing a renewal of a point four-nine mill levy for the benefit of, for each county for the purpose of providing funds for the benefit of children's services for the care, placement, and treatment of abused, neglected, and dependent children.
Second. Role coach, Julie.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Julie, well, you, you know you're.
Yeah. Can I go get a corner?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, she didn't know about it. It was just, we didn't feel you would want to come back in if you didn't have to, so.
Oh, I noticed that.
Yeah. That's all I have, last, this is a great.
Thank you so much. I'll see you at one-thirty.
Yes, I'll be back. I'm good?
You're good.
Thank you.
My name's Jane.
Hello.
Hello. Jane getting where this festive time to.
Will had his ho, ho, ho.
He's really in here.
Oh, are you?
Aww.
Was he, you had it's the program for?
Yeah, it's the lab, I P P coordinator. As you know, we have a retirement supervisor in that section. It was the laboratory supervisor industrial pre-treatment coordinator. Had happened at the end of November. And we did an evaluation of the physician, the pre-treatment program itself. And she came to the determination that we would like to replace that physician with just a laboratory industrial pre-treatment coordinator. And we have that draft job description as well. And Janet Kovek has reviewed that. It's just indirect for now, she has to finalize it.
Okay.
But in the analysis that we did showed what some of the existing positions we have and then this proposed position. So right now, we have two staff in the lab. And given the job description that we put together, this would provide some upward mobility movement for some of the staff within the department. But it would be taking out that supervisory role. And those supervisory tasks would fall under our technology manager, which is Lee Benson. Now, when he originally took over, when we created that supervisor role in the lab, that was because Lee was not, was over water. And then he became water and wastewater, the operations manager. So that position was created to take some of the lab supervisory tasks away from Lee. But now that he's in the technology division. Right, he does have a little bit more time to do the supervisory tasks in the lab. So this position would be for laboratory and also that I P P position. And we do have a need for it. The rules and regulations of us and also the Ohio EPA require us to follow those. And we have to do routine assessments, inspections, and the system and analysis and reporting to the EPA that those are requirements to meet. So if you look at that evaluation that we did, we were looking that it would be based on professional development benefit that those staff are eligible to receive. And we just did it based on the doubt from zero to up to a dollar. From the lab supervisor position, that would be a twelve percent savings to nine percent. So between nine to twelve percent savings with this position in our overall budget.
Wow.
That's great.
I'd love to hear those words, savings.
Yeah.
My ears always prick up.
So if this was, if you guys are, if the words of approval of it, what Janet would do, she would put together a journal entry. It would be added to the consent agenda on the eighteenth. And she would be bringing that job description forward.
Sounds good. Saves money, makes sure, just don't meet your requirements.
And it would provide upward movement for some of our lab staff if, if they pursue this. And it would also open up a position in the lab as well.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Oh, yeah.
If you have not heard.
Oh, yeah.
There was a meeting Tuesday night, special meeting for the Village of Manway to start the process of three readings and then vote probably after the first of the year to implement the rate structure surcharge that we've been including in our discussions with them about the merger. The village council accurately understands that they need to spend the money to keep their facilities open and open. A couple of things came out of the meeting. One, as you told them in letter form, they of course asked the question, is this retaliatory or county's part? Because we're walking away on the twenty-seventh. I just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page. The EPA regulations, which have changed over the time period that we've been operating their plants, has made it all but impossible for us to staff our plants properly and.
And you've been very open regarding that.
All along.
Okay.
If you remember right, they wanted to go to the end of the year because they were hopeful that they were going to get past the referendum part. They, it's been important that they have a hundred signatures and it's in the clerk's possession. So with ninety-nine point nine-nine to infer, they will go forward unless they find seventy-some people that are not registered voters, but the possibility of that's pretty slim. I just wanted you to be aware, we're not retaliatory. It's all about staffing and staffing properly. Our facilities and the surplus that we've enjoyed and been able to use for them has also started to backlog some of the work that we would be doing with our staff in our facilities. So we're walking away, holding our heads up high for this endeavor that we fell into. You will, if you haven't already, may start having your constituents contact you about continuing this endeavor because the cost that they enjoy with us, our actual costs to staff them, is going to probably go up two or three times. And that's, it's going to hurt them. They're also actively looking to hire people to do the work that they were doing with staff, employees prior to us being involved. Their retirements is the reason we won't do it. We'll just have to do what we can to help them, but we're not going to be able to actively participate with them. The mayor has contacted me several times. The mayor has contacted me several times.